No worries.
I actually told you, since you said you basically quit, I had a long conversation with you. This is what I asked you to do. Come up here and we have the interviews. Tell us, tell us and show us what you're gonna do. They're just saying, tell us and show us. Like come here with a plan and I'm going to you probably. That's no other people. He's not that yet. Yeah.
Just gotta change the. That's about it.
Alright, here we go. Good evening. I'd like to call the regularly scheduled board meeting of the Waterloo Community Schools Board of Education to order and ask that you join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. And now for the pledge of allegiance this evening, we have a treat. We have some members of the West High JROTC who will lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. And now we'll read our mission statement, and I'm just gonna read it tonight since we're a small but mighty number of four board members. We still do have a quorum. The mission of the Waterloo Community Schools is to commit to a comprehensive system of education and support to assure that each and every student will graduate prepared for college, career, and citizenship, as evidenced by continuing education, pursuing a career path, and contributing to a community. The next item on our agenda then is information from individuals and delegations. And is there anyone here this evening who wishes to address the board? And if so, I'd ask that you please come forward and state your name and address. I know, small and mighty, small and mighty group, so. Alright, well seeing none, then we'll go ahead and move on to our consent agenda, which this evening consists of quite a few items, so bear with me. It's item A, which are the minutes of the October twenty-second, two thousand eighteen regular board meeting. Item B, which are personnel appointments and adjustments. Item C, which are bills due and payable and bills paid between board meetings. Item D, which is the high school government class travel to Washington DC. Item E, which is the West High School JROTC travel to Ozark, Missouri. Item F, which is the classroom space availability for open enrollment purposes. Item G, the IASB Delegate Assembly Representative. And item H, the Waterloo Career Center Change Order Six. Are there any items that board members wish to have removed?
Item D.
Item D?
Item E and item H.
Item E and item H. Anything else Rhonda or Aster? Great, then could I get a motion to place items A, B, C, F, and G on the table, please?
So moved.
Thank you Sue, and a second? Thank you Rhonda. Then all those in favor of approval of those following items, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. That takes us to item D, which is on page eighteen. And I will get to that motion in just a second.
I, the Board of Education.
Thank you.
...travel for Waterloo Schools' high school students and Mr. Youska to Washington DC, February seventeenth through the twenty-second, two thousand nineteen.
Thank you Sue. And is there a second? Thank you Aster, and discussion.
I saw Mr. Youska there, so I just thought if you'd just come give us a brief synopsis of how many students you have, and the itinerary looks awesome as normal. So just wanted to give you a chance to shine tonight.
Maybe collect a few more people for the program.
Yeah, you never know. Actually, on your thing, it says ten to fifteen because I haven't had the meeting yet because I'm supposed to have approval before I have the meeting. So that's a guestimate of who was interested. I do have a few more invitations sent out for the meeting when I have it. You know, I have a waiting list of people. But if you look at the schedule and everything, it's February seventeenth through the twenty-second is our plan for that. This will be the twenty-first year I've done this. I was thinking about stopping last year just because, and I had twelve kids approach me at school after they heard how much fun we all had last year and everything, and said, would you do it one more year? I said, well, we need to have enough interest. And, because I didn't know if there was enough interest after last year. And so they got about twelve or fifteen kids' interest and said we would come to our meeting with the parents, and I've invited a few more. So, you know, you can't tell kids no when they come and they ask you like something like that, so. So anyway, well, so I started planning on the trip right away last spring in March. Work with Close Up, which some of you are familiar with it and some of you are not. It's nonprofit, nonpartisan. I get a lot of things in the mail from travel groups that want us to go on trips, and don't get me wrong, they're great trips, but they're in business to make money. And Close Up is a group that started way back in nineteen seventy-one. Louisiana Senator left millions of dollars to the federal government to set up a grant trust type situation to have kids come to Washington DC to learn about government, see the sights, and of course have a little fun, too. And for some reason, the government has somehow not squandered all that money and kept this alive. They do things in a first-class and very safe way. We stay at very safe hotels. The food is very good for the kids. In fact, as much walking as we did, some of the kids actually gained weight last year. And, and so I told them to watch what they're eating for breakfast, so, anyway. So we're treated very well. We stay in very safe hotels, and the cost is very, very, very good. My wife and I went to the one hotel where we stayed, it was twelve hundred bucks for us to stay there for one week. The kids don't have to pay that. The flight tickets, Close Up reserves flight tickets, and they did it last May. I'm not bound to that number, but I give them a guess. And then with Waterloo Columbus and Cedar Rapids Jefferson, which we travel together as you can see in the letter, they kind of divvy up the tickets based on that, and then if they have to buy more, I think they kind of get caught. But you can see the itinerary, it's a full thing. I like to fly out in the morning as fast as I can, early flight, and connect and be in Washington DC, hopefully at Arlington Cemetery by one fifteen, no later than one fifteen. So we kind of milk the time on Sunday. And then we try to take the last flight out on Friday so that we can spend a lot of time that, that day. Thursday and Friday were a lot of free time, and of course, Mr. Williams got us hooked up with the best tour of the Pentagon we could ever have last year with a former student from Waterloo. We got in places where nobody else gets to go, and I think we walked about thirteen, fourteen miles that day, and the kids were, kids were great. At least that's what my Fitbit said. So they were pretty tired that night, but walking around the Pentagon. And I hadn't been to the Pentagon for a long time, so that was like the best trip, one of the highlights of the trip. And I actually took other Iowa teachers and other kids on the trip. DeShond was very good about including them. I had said that there were five other teachers and kids from various parts of the state of Iowa, and so I hooked them up with that, so that was very good. Thank you for that, so it's nice to have connections. So hoping we maybe can make connections again on that one, so. So anyway, you can see we keep them a busy day. Capitol Hill Day is Wednesday, and I added on the bottom there, we go to the Holocaust Museum. If I can schedule everything right on Wednesday, we visit all our representatives' offices that morning, meet with them, take a tour of the Capitol, and hopefully we're done. Eat at, eat at the train station mall or area there, the, the food court, which I can't believe that the guy knows me every year when I walk in with the kids. At the one, at the, at the one restaurant, and I said, how do you know me? And he says, well, you're a good tipper. And I said, well, and you walk in with kids, so anyway, so. But anyway, we do that, and we have a theater night on Wednesday. We either go to a awards theater, we go to the Kennedy Center for Performing Arts, the Arena Stage Theater, which is brand-new theaters that were built on the south edge of DC, which has three theaters, you pick your play. And so you can get to do that. So anyway, there's lots of options on Close Up, so I put options over to the right. There's all kinds of things that we do, depends on what the kids want to do. If we have to go to Georgetown for Jackson McNally, we go to Georgetown for Jackson McNally like we did one year. So, but it's a very, very good trip. They learn a lot, but they're having so much fun, they sometimes are fooled that they don't know they're learning so much, so.
So Mr. Youska, my, because you haven't really put out invites, my understanding was that you are also inviting both high schools, East and West, students, and maybe working through Amy Mehe? Is that the right person that you're working through at East High?
Amy's at the Career Center, isn't she?
Well, she's, yeah, I was thinking that she was.
Well, four years ago, Amy and I set up an account for East when Ms. McReina and Ms. Weekly inquired about that. And then Nicole Presley and I, we had meetings at East and never really got anything going. So I reached out to some East High parents and kids that I knew from coaching middle school across country who had expressed an interest, and just heard back one email from one parent today and said that she didn't want to, so, or her son didn't want to and stuff, and hadn't heard on some of the others, but, but.
That off, so, but it would be a joint trip at the.
If there are some East kids, yes, but, you know, I'm not in the building, so it's hard for me. And Nicole tried real hard. I went over and we had meetings over, over at East two or three times. We had a few parents. Sometimes it takes a while to get going. It's like when I started this trip at North Tama Schools. There were some years I just didn't have anybody, you know, and, and that's just luck of the draw, the numbers. It's a commitment, it's a commitment by the students, it's a commitment by the parents. And, you know, I had one girl who was a freshman at West High, told me, Mr. Youska, I am going to go on this trip when I'm a senior. She was a single-parent family, and her and her dad budgeted for it for three years, and she went as a senior, and now she's in the Air Force, too, so, and still is. She's a career girl. But she, she made a commitment as a ninth grader that she was gonna do it, you know, and bound and determined, and so, and I met with her dad, and we talked about it, and that's, she made it, made it happen, so.
Thank you.
And I just want to say thank you again for agreeing to do this because this is an excellent experience, and I think it really does help to, to mold our future leaders. So I'm very appreciative that, hopefully you'll agree to do it next year. If the creek don't rise, as my grandma says.
I still have the enthusiasm to do it, but, you know, there's a lot of, there's a lot of hurdles to jump over now, you know, with lots of things, you know, with requirements and things. But yeah, I still love doing it, you know, and the reason I do it is because somebody did it for me when I was sixteen, as I've told a lot of you before. And it was a life-changing week in my life, you know, and the kids that come home, they say the same thing, so. And I have students who work out there now at the Department of Ag. And Ms. Abibi, who ran for county supervisor, she is a former, she worked for the Department of Ag, and I believe she went on the trip with Columbus way back whenever, when Mr. Gersh took the trip. So, I mean, there's a connection. She found her way to the Department of Ag as an attorney out there, so.
Well, yeah, yeah, she's awesome. Well, all of the Abibis are awesome. I, I wanted to say, I too reached out to some students and some staff at East High because, you know, I've been trying to recruit some students to go. I don't know what it's gonna take, you know, I know we've extended it. I've tried to work on my own as well, and I just hope we can get it figured out because it's a great opportunity.
Nicole tried really hard, and Amy tried really hard. But Nicole, her and I worked very closely the last two or three years on that, and, and, you know, shook our head. She was very frustrated about it, and so, you know, but we did have some meetings over there, and it just, you know, it just takes.
I know, I know, we, we've all really been trying, and I, I just hope that, that next year we can improve things. And I, and I, what I don't want is for parents to think that because of the price, I don't want that to intimidate them, because I, I could imagine, you know, the, the thought of doing that. So hopefully, for those who are watching and listening, next year, if your student goes to, to East High, that you would consider coming on this trip, so. It's very well chaperoned, it's educational, social, cultural, it's just awesome.
And speaking of connections, if you know Alexa Denherter, she's a West High grad.
Yep, I had her in class.
Yeah, she is working in Senator Grassley's office now. So she might be a good connect for you.
Can you give us an estimated cost per student again?
I can tell you the exact cost.
Okay.
It went up a little bit. It was seventeen seventy-six last year, isn't that amazing? Now, that was your plane flight. What it was is the plane flight went up because of the fuel costs for the airlines. They always tell us that their costs are going up. I don't know whether we should believe them or not, but that's what the cost went up. So it's one thousand eight hundred and two dollars, so that's your airplane ticket, which is four hundred and seventy-eight dollars round trip. That's still a pretty good deal. All your food and all your hotels, starting Sunday through Friday, you know, and so what you would need to take for spending money would be souvenirs. If you want to buy an extra Coca-Cola, or if you want to eat in the airport. These kids eat in the airports. I just don't understand when we travel, how kids can eat and fly. I do not eat and fly, you know. But the kids, they, they hit every food stand in every airport, and it's like they have bottomless pits. I guess I've forgotten what it's like to be a teenager, but I just, I can't fly and eat. I just, one of my rules, so. But, so the money that you would take extra would be souvenirs and things, so. You know, it's kind of like the one year I took a girl whose initials were DC, so guess what? She was buying a lot of things that year, but, so. But basically, you could go with twenty bucks in your pocket after the original fee is paid, and you'd be fine all week. You wouldn't need much, so.
And I wanted to express my thanks, too, because kids love it. I mean, they just love it, so. Thank you for taking the time and enduring.
There was a historian, John Hope Franklin, nobody hardly knows him except history teachers like me. He said, "We must get beyond the textbooks, go out into the bypass, and tell the world the glories of our juries." So, you know, I mean, along with Waterloo, global thinking, limitless choices, trying to provide some choices here for students, you know, yeah.
I'll see you tomorrow night.
Payback time as a government teacher.
There you go. Seven, seven o'clock tomorrow night?
Tomorrow night.
Okay, great, thank you. Is there anything else for Mr. Youska? Alright. Then seeing none, all those in favor of approving the high school government class trip to Washington DC, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. Thanks again, Mr. Youska. Alright, we'll move on then to item E, which is on page twenty-two, and this is the JROTC trip. And the recommended motion is, "The Board of Education, approve travel for West High JROTC students and two instructors to Ozark, Missouri, November thirtieth through December first, two thousand eighteen."
So moved.
Thank you both. And I know that we have Chief Master Sergeant Paul Wallace with us and Major Brian Carlson, so if you guys want to come forward, I'm not sure who pulled this, but I think it was Sue, so. And we've got a cadet here, too, yay. So if you guys want to step forward to the microphone, and I think we'll ask you a few questions. If you want to start by telling us a little overview, and then we'll chime in.
Absolutely. Board members, thanks for having us. First time I've got to address you, so it's kind of exciting to see the process. So I'm Major Brian Carlson, I'm the, the, kind of the new guy on the block here. So most of the stuff you see is, is him. He, he got the experience of kind of picking this up last year. So as you know, the program kind of got stood down for a semester. Chief came in and did a great job getting it kind of going, and we're both really excited to be here for this school year, to have both of us working. So this is one of those kind of things that, that we've, we've really tried to re-energize is, is our drill program. We have fifty-five, I believe the cadets have picked fifty-five trophies sitting down in our, in our little area. Down, if you come down to our classroom, we got some tables, basically the tables are full. So we're trying to not only put, put, find some more to put on there, but, you know, maybe look at down the road. We've got a fundraiser going to build us a little cabinet to, to, you know, start putting them in and displaying them, the display case. But real quick, as the senior instructor, I just wanted to kind of really touch on kind of how this trip really, you know, ways of re-energizing it. So junior ROTC, we, you know, kind of feed into the same mission. Our, our mission through the Air Force is to build citizens of character for our nation and our community. So, you know, ties right into exactly your mission statement. But what I feel our part is that is help make these students successful. So building them the citizens of character is, and into whatever that is. So I, you know, wanted to just say that, that the chief and I are not recruiters. We don't push these kids to go in the military any, any way, shape, or form. That's, that's somebody else's job, they get paid to do that. Our job is to help make these, these young folks successful in whatever they choose. So if they choose the military, we might have a little of experience in that, so we'd love to show them the way and the right ways to get there. If that's enlisting or going for an officer program as like the Air Force Academy or any of the academies, or any of the ROTC-type programs, we'd love to help them do that. If that's college, we actually teach part of our curriculum is life skills. That's sometimes how to fill out a FAFSA form, we actually have a lesson on that. Where was that lesson for me when I was trying to do that, right? We have lessons like how to write a check, how to do your checkbook. Once again, where was that lesson for me? But those kinds of things that help them, if they want to go off to college, we, we have those kinds of things. And I'll let Chief, Chief likes to talk about another piece of that, but I'll let him, he knows what I'm talking about. But I'll let him explain a little bit about that, and, and with the four years of our program. But that's it. So, so in this, to tie this back into our trip, one of those is, these, these students have a long-storied tradition of really good drill teams and, and a good program. And we kind of lost that, I believe, with that, kind of that, that, that semester we took off. So we're trying to get them back, and before we lose that, that, the students that we have that have that experience, we want to kind of, kind of, you know, drive that really quick. So to do that, we actually have a drill camp coming up, the seventh, eighth, and ninth, that is partnered with East, because we want to, we want to bring everybody up, right? Why, if we've got people across town, you know, as we get better, you know, maybe we can have a partnership where East and us have these drill meets here together, and we don't have to drive to Ozark, Missouri, right? You know, but right now, we want to use that experience, bring that back, the thirtieth and the first at that drill meet. They give us a, a report card, show us how we do, and then go to the, the folks that we're paying for this drill team camp and say, help us get better, right? So we, when we found this, we were like, you know what? This gives us an opportunity to kind of get that grade, whatever that grade ends up being, take a, a paid organization, this drill team camp that we're gonna have, and say, guys, help us fix it. Let's make it better, and, and, and that is partnered with East and West. So we are having that seventh, eighth, and ninth, we're having that drill camp, so that will hopefully benefit both schools. So that's why, I guess, we're kind of behind the ball on presenting to you guys that, hey, we're going out of state to do this. It was something that we didn't really plan on, but when it kind of, it showed its face, we were like, you know what? I think this is super beneficial. It shows the cadets we're willing to invest the time and the effort and the money in them to, to really ramp up the program. So that's, that's my little piece. I'm gonna let Chief talk a little bit about his kind of thoughts on the program. And of course, I want to finish with our, our, this is our cadet wing commander, Dylan Jensen. He's a cadet colonel, so it's kind of the highest rank you can achieve as a cadet. He's done great things, and he'll kind of touch on really what the drill competition entails, so Chief.
Yeah, thank you, sir. Yeah, like the major said, I had the opportunity to start at the second semester last year, and, and in doing so, initially I was actually commuting, so every day I was actually driving from Ames for the first ten weeks of, of school. But I made the trip, and we actually started doing drill last year, but.
Five in the morning.
Yeah, but we just, but we just couldn't get there. And like I said, it was amazing to me how much we atrophied just in that one semester, that, that, what you, what you don't get to pass on. And so in, in building this corps, I guess, back up to what the legacy that it, that it has, because like I said, when you see those trophies, you know that they, they had a legacy, and, and the cadets want that. And I, as I think you know, the, our program is a cadet-run program. And so part of the, the ideas that came from, hey, can we do this? Of going to this competition actually sort of was formed by the, by the cadet cadre of, we want to be that, that good again. But the one, the other thing, the other reason we wanted to have a drill competition earlier is so that the new cadets, both last year that started with the second semester and, and our freshman cadets this year, is, I don't think they, they know what they don't know. You know, they, they're doing all this hard work every morning, but they're, they don't really have the vision of what that actually means. And by getting this competition in now, that we're gonna give them a little bit of a taste. You know, we, we think we actually can compete based on some of our practices, but until we actually get them there and they actually get to be and experience that, 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 the challenge of competing against these, these other schools. And some of these schools, you know, we look, do a little surfing online, they've, they've got some pretty good legacy, too. And so it's, we're gonna be going up against some of the, some of the best in the, in the Midwest schools. Yeah, Des Moines Central actually gonna be there, they're number five in the nation, by the way, so. And the company that we hired for our drill camp is actually the same company that they, they used several years ago. So you can see kind of where we're, where we're building to kind of start, restart the legacy, if you will, of, of West High's drill competition. And so, and I, I think the major alluded to it, and one thing I would add is, and we see this as one more thing to help them be successful. And one of the things I, I've been talking to the cadets about since I've been there is all the teachers at West High want them to be successful. But I think one of the things that, that J-Ratsy brings is that, if they take J-Ratsy for four years, I'm gonna be there every year. And when I know what their goals and their, and their dreams are, kind of like Mr. Youska talked about that one student that says as a freshman she wanted to go there. If we know what their dreams are and their, and their goals are, and they come back next year, you know, their teachers are gonna help them be successful as freshmen. We're gonna be there as, when they're sophomores and kind of see how you're doing, and pushing them towards whatever their goals are, whatever they want to do. And so to us, you know, as part of that drill legacy, you know, we're gonna be there to help. Because Dylan's gonna be going, it, you know, it's only a few months, really, when you think about how long it's gonna be until May is here, and he's gonna be walking across the stage with his diploma. And we've been encouraging him to, you've, you've got to help pass on the vision that you have for this corps to the next corps. And so, and that's what I think, like I say, that's one of the things that this will be kind of setting the standard and the baseline for, so. Alright, how are you guys doing? Good, good, alright. Oh, I'm just fantastic. Yeah, get to talk in front of entire school, now I get to talk in front of you guys, right? Alright, well, basically, my drill team consists of about twenty-two cadets. Alright, they're all very hard-working cadets. I can tell you fantastic points about every single one of them. Each of them stands out. They are great people, and I believe they deserve to go to a competition like this because I believe we can place first, second, or third in any of the categories they have, which are color guard regulation, armed regulation, unarmed regulation. We also have individual competitions, the IDD, individual drill down. I believe we have cadets skilled enough to earn first or tenth against, I don't know, a hundred to two hundred other cadets across the Midwest. This is, as Chief and Major said, this is part of the legacy. I was part of that legacy my freshman and sophomore year. I want this legacy to continue, to add more trophies to our tables. Which we have more of than other sports, might I add. Yeah, so, that trophy case, keep in mind. Yeah, but yeah, but I believe this drill meet will help every single cadet out there. As they said, the following weekend, we do have a drill camp. We could basically take those scores, give it to them, and they can help us execute our drill moves more precise, more cut, more clean than what we were doing, or, before. more cut, more clean than what we were doing, or, before, ah, excuse me, we can, what's the word I'm looking for, we can optimize their resources to make us better so we can actually go to Air Force Nationals this year, which is also out of state, so you might see us again later.
It's another goal they accept.
Yes, I believe my team is a national level team, and the first step of being a national level team is going to a regional drill meet, which is Ozark, Missouri, against other teams like Des Moines Central, I believe, I'm not just saying here, but, I believe we're better than them, because we are, all right? Yeah, yes, I am incredibly humble.
Dylan, what is your last name and what are your future plans?
Um, my last name is Jensen, I'm actually enlisting into the Iowa National Guard, I already did enlist, I leave for basic training, June twenty-sixth, Fort Jackson, South Carolina, right, right after that, I go to AIT School, Advanced Individual Training School, where I learned to be a combat supply specialist. I will be back around this time, between now and Christmas, and then I'm planning on going straight to UNI and getting my bachelor's in advanced manufacturing, hopefully I'll get a internship at John Deere, so I'll have, you know, the military paying for my college and John Deere paying for my college, right? Yeah, thinking ahead, but, yes.
So of the twenty-two that are going, what, I'm just wondering, like, the drop-off of having a semester off, how that aligned with the kids that are participating now? Do you have many juniors and seniors, or is it more freshmen, soph?
It's, on our drill team, it's more freshmen than sophomores than juniors and seniors. There are two seniors, I'm one of them, and six juniors, and the rest are all freshmen and sophomores.
Super, super.
You promised you'll come back and tell us how you did.
I will.
Okay.
I will come and tell you all individually.
Awesome.
I'll hold the trophies in my hand, be like, hey, look at these.
And if they have a competition on public speaking, you should sign up.
Oh, yeah, you guys should have seen me this, this morning, I was sweating bullets in front of the entire student body, I was like, oh my god.
How much coffee did this young man drink today? I don't know.
We had six color guards today.
Yes.
And then, and he had to speak for the veterans.
This morning at the assembly, yes, yes, yep, nice job, Dylan.
Thank you.
You're all good.
All right.
Anything? All right, well, safe travels.
Thank you.
All right. All those in favor then of the recommended motion to accept the West High School JROTC travel to Ozark, Missouri, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. Thanks for coming out tonight. All right, the next item on our agenda then is item H, which is the Waterloo Career Center Change Order Number Six, and that recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve the Waterloo Career Center Change Order Number Six as presented as an add of nine thousand twenty-two dollars and forty-six cents.
Sumoop.
Thank you, Sue, and a second? Thank you, Astor, and discussion.
I just wondered if we could, you know, just explain to the public what this change order is all about, just to be very transparent about it.
Absolutely. You want to take that, Michael? You want me to?
I can start and then Michael can fill in. So what we've done, really typically, we look at anything that is a, a change of order over five thousand dollars, and so this actually is a series of ten change orders. I don't believe any of them, not one of them was, in itself was over five thousand dollars, but collectively, we're bringing them to you because it's, you know, it's really in the spirit of transparency, so there are several things in there, and matter of fact, maybe for the viewers, it might be just good for me to just look at those, there was a, there's a crack reinforcement, just an add of twenty-seven hundred dollars, there's some work on a second floor stair, stair in the hallway, and that was added, adding forty-seven hundred, forty-seven eighty-nine, there's some work to be done on a drain tile, four thousand, there's a well water piping, which is a deduct, we didn't need that bid for it, but did not need that, and so that's a savings of eleven thousand five hundred. We're changing around a little bit of a, there's a camera, we're going to relocate it to a more advantageous place, and that is an add of three hundred dollars. There's some work to hand, handrails, and that was an add of forty-nine hundred dollars, and I'm, I'm estimating here, just rounding, tree removal, that's an add of two thousand dollars, changing some lights on the loading dock, which was three hundred seventy-eight dollars, and then again, some security camera, which is, that kind of goes with change order number five, but that was an add of seven hundred and thirty dollars, and then furring a wall for an electrical panel, so, and that was five hundred dollars add. So when you add all of those up and then deduct the other, it, it did end up to be a positive amount, and it was an additional nine thousand dollars, and I want to give the exact amount, nine thousand twenty-two dollars and forty-six cents, so we wanted to bring that before you. It is not uncommon to do change orders, and when, when the architects are working on their specs at the very beginning, they always want to get it far enough along that, that you have really good plans, but they also do plan for some change orders, because to, to spend time upfront, getting them exactly perfect, it's actually cheaper in the long run to, to deal with change orders versus paying the architects upfront to make sure that you have not won. So that's kind of a, a little bit of a, a balance system that we play in, I don't know if Mr. Coughlin has anything to add to that or not. We're still at under, we're still under the original, because this is the second set of change orders, the first one, we had a deduct of sixty-eight thousand, and this one is a total add of nine thousand, so we're, we're still under, under budget.
I think another thing that is characteristic of this plan with change orders is that this is a remodel, it's not a new construction, so remodeling always brings surprises. If any of you have ever done anything in your home, remodeling always has adjustments to make, so as we have looked at the project this far in place, the amount of change orders that we've had has been very admirable for the plans of the contractor and working with the architect, so this is a, a good sign of the diligent work that they have done.
Thank you, the only thing, tree removal, I just don't recall that many trees out at Central.
Where the new pieces coming out, there were some, they were kind of, it was shrubbery, I guess I'd call it more than, than big trees, those little bushes that were kind of around that one stairwell.
Yeah, I got it. I'm thinking tree, and I'm like, I don't even recall many trees around Central, but okay, gotcha, thank you.
Yep. Anything further? Sue, thanks for bringing that up, though, that's a good. All right, then, seeing no further questions, all those in favor of approving the Waterloo Career Center Change Order Six, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. The next item on our agenda then is item I, and this is on page forty-four, and this is the Counseling Practicum Memorandum of Understanding between the Waterloo Schools and the University of Northern Iowa, and the recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve the memorandum of understanding with the University of Northern Iowa for the Waterloo Anchor Schools Practicum Initiative, effective January first, two thousand nineteen through December thirty-first, two thousand nineteen.
Sumoop.
Thank you, Sue, and a second? And discussion, I know that Jeff Frost is here with us this evening and can probably give us a, and I think there's some, some more folks from UNI here, so.
Hello, everyone.
Hi.
Jeff Frost, Executive Director of Technical Professional Education and also Head of Counseling.
See, I'm glad you said it all, so.
So, we're here tonight to discuss and seek approval upon a memorandum, memorandum of understanding between the Waterloo Schools and the University of Northern Iowa, to make the Waterloo Schools the exclusive placement site for practicum students within the UNI counseling program. And so I'm going to introduce Dr. Darcy Gage, Davis Gage, and she'll introduce the rest of everybody with this crew here, and they'll explain it better.
Hello, thank you for letting us present this morning. I'm joined by Dr. Roberto Suazo, one of our faculty members, as well as Dr. Annette Lynch, she is our, our director of our school. Our counseling program is located within the School of Applied Human Sciences in which Annette directs, and, and so I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Suazo, he's going to explain a little bit more in detail about our school practicum, how it will work within the schools, so I'll turn it over to him.
Thank you, President, Vice President, Superintendent, Board Members for this opportunity. Thank you, Jeff, for being the liaison during this process. Just to give you a quick overview of the genesis of this idea, the counseling program in the past used to be attached to the Pricelab, if you recall, so we used to send our school counseling students there for practicum, and one day a week or so, and that was the site in which they would execute their functions as a school counselor practicum. With time, you know, the Pricelab closed, and so we needed another site, during that process, we went to an open, kind of a process of selection of practicum sites, and so students could go anywhere within the state. With time, we also received the report from the State Board of Education indicating that we needed more oversight in terms of the practicum placement and supervision processes. In order to do that, we had, we came up with the plan of selecting the Waterloo Schools for our site. I have to say that it would have been tempting to use the Cedar Falls Schools, and I'm a firm believer of the Waterloo Schools and what we produce, and I say what we produce because, first of all, I'm a resident of Waterloo, I work in Cedar Falls, but I live here, and also, my children went through the Waterloo Schools, Kingsley, Hoover and West. Currently, one of them, my oldest, is a PhD in counseling psychology, professor at Seton Hall University in New Jersey, and Director of Online Programs in Psychology. My youngest one is a physician and Chief Resident at the University of Arizona Medical Research Hospital, and I'm looking into, and more advanced training. So I firmly believe in what we do, so this is not just because we do it, because I know what we can do. As a result, we thought about the Waterloo Schools, this was well planned, we've been working with this idea for some time, you see the, the MOU and the content of it, our plan is to have a pilot program for one year, with the expectation that this will be extended for a lifetime, if this works well. Besides that, we, actually this week, Dr. Davis Gage led a training for the school counselors that have been selected for the pilot program on supervision techniques, so we want to give back to our school counselors, and then, understanding that they need to have the tools to provide accurate supervision. So we already provided that training, we're having another meeting with the actual school counselors and the practicum students Wednesday, this coming Wednesday, so we're going to have them all together with the permission of the board, and then provide the tools, and then so to plan ahead of time for this coming year. So our plan is to initiate with this pilot program, have it really solid in the next few years, maybe add elements of research-based interventions, so we were, we're looking at potentially collecting data that could be useful to the board, that could be useful to the district, and could be useful to University of Iowa, so hopefully this is a win-win situation in which all of us can benefit. Would you like to add anything else?
I would also just add, just because I think it, it adds to the story, I do appreciate the, the UNI staff, they came, oh gosh, Jeff, give me the date, what month, September maybe, and worked with our school counselors and allowed them to have input, and actually really requested input from them on how to best make this work. And they made, after listening to them, they made some modifications to the MOU and to the schedule, and so I think that's always the best thing, because this is not something that you're approving tonight, or that we're asking you to approve, that we're going to unveil to the counselors tomorrow, they were at the table as we, as we worked on this, so this is not a surprise, they know that we're here tonight talking about this, and they had input into it, I think that's an important point.
Thank you, yes.
And I was just going to say, the, the last sort of summation that you made about the ability to have some research and something that would be helpful not only to UNI, but to us as a district, and how our interventions and other things as we go forward, I think is invaluable, and so I'm very anxious to see how that, you know, I know that's not going to be immediate, but how that pans out, I'm very happy to hear that that's part of the MOU as well, so thank you for morphing that, putting that in there also. So Rhonda, sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
First of all, I just want to say, your legacy, wow, and your tie is pretty cool too, but, but your kids, that legacy, that, that's wonderful. So I'm, I'm really containing my enthusiasm, because anybody that knows me knows that when I ran for school board, there were three things that, that were very important to me, one was to reduce the number of referrals of students, another was to improve the graduation and completion rates, specifically for our minoritized students, and the third was to improve and increase our mental health counselors and our school guidance counselors. I graduated almost thirty years ago from a similar program in counseling, I have my masters in counseling as well. If you all have ever had the opportunity to look at UNI's school guidance counseling program, it is phenomenal, the facilities are phenomenal, the staff are awesome, and I just want to say thank you all for, for coming to Waterloo, I think that this will give your students the opportunity to really work with a diverse group of students, to learn about things such as race-based trauma that we're seeing a lot more, a lot more of, I, I could talk for days, I'm just so excited, I, I can't say enough about it, so, thank you very much.
Our pleasure, thank you.
Oh, one other question, so the students who graduate with their degree in school counseling, do they have to have a teaching certificate to do school counseling, or how does that work?
Not, not anymore.
Okay, not anymore? Well, that lets you know how long it's been.
You bet.
She's really excited, I can tell, so.
Thank you.
All right, is there anything further? All right, thank you all for being here, we look forward to this continued relationship, it's going to be great.
Thank you very much, appreciate your time, thank you.
All right, then, all those in favor of approving the Counseling Practicum MOU between the Waterloo Schools and the University of Northern Iowa, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. The next item on our agenda then is on page forty-nine, these are board policy changes, and this is our first reading, I'll ask that Tara Thomas, our Director of School and Community Relations, come forward and walk us through these. Good evening, Tara.
Good evening, we have ten proposed policies to come before you, and I will entertain any and all questions.
All right. Yeah, right, we have some, the first ones are the first reading, which are two oh two point two, two seventeen, four oh one point one, and six oh two.
Okay, did you want to do these as separate?
Well, we have that one on here first, the first reading, and then we have the second reading as item K, which, which has the other six on there, so, I don't know.
So just these first four, then, if anyone has any questions?
Let's go through these first, yes, if that's okay with you. We'll break them out, first read, second read.
Yeah, the oath of office just looks like we're replacing the name of the district, right?
Yes.
Maybe we can just whiz through those very quickly, I think it's cosmetic changes on the two oh two point two, the board member oath of office, on two seventeen, a very, very minor change to, just.
Well, at the committee meeting, we just determined that there are other associations that we review membership, so we said, why have that specifically in there, remove it and leave it generic that it's for all, so that was the only change on that one.
Okeydoke.
Four oh one point one is guiding principles for employees, and we're really striking that language on the values and operating principles, not because we don't believe in it, because it is now a part of the handbook, and it is more appropriate to be in the handbook, so it just will not be part of the. So it just will not be part of the actual policy. Am I right, Tara, on that? That it will just be part of the, of the handbook?
Handbook.
The employee handbook. And then?
65 is the updated parent and family engagement requirements for Title I. So we are aligning this with the new language that's being required when you have Title I references in your policies. So Darren Hannah came and worked with us on that one.
Great. All right, looks pretty straightforward. Do board members have any questions for Tara on these four, or for Sue?
That wasn't that straightforward, Esther.
At the meeting, you mean? I didn't mean this piece, I meant the earlier one, too.
But the Title I, we finally got it all.
Got it?
Yeah.
All right.
After much discussion.
All right. Is there anything further on those four? All right, Tara, then let's move on to item K, which are the board policy changes, and this is the second reading for these six. And do you want me to read them, or do you want to go through them?
Sure.
Again, I know we went through them two weeks ago, but...
So for...
Oh, hang on a second, Tara. Let me put this on the... Yeah, hang on a second. That the Board of Education approved the following policies: nondiscrimination, equal education opportunity, meetings of the Board of Education, notification of arrest, criminal charges or child abuse complaints, nepotism, incompetent private instruction, or homeschooled.
So 103...
Hang on, Tara, just a minute. Can I get that motion on the table, please? Thank you, Esther, and a second?
Second.
Thank you, Rhonda. Okay. What? That was for information only, we're not voting on those. Okay, are we good now? All right, so we've got those six on the table. Thank you. And now Tara.
Okay, so 103 is just the updated language that Dr. Botchway is now included in. And then the next one, equal education opportunity, 104. Again, another update based on some of the IASB language as well to correlate, and then Dr. Botchway's addition. And then on 210, that was the proposed change that only needed to be updated for, actually, I can't remember, oh, just that time change for the meetings now all being at five for the board. And then 400.4, this one, again, updating titles. The 401.3 nepotism, that had some additional language that was removed. And then 603.3 was competent private instruction, and we updated that to reflect current practice. And then proposed 103, oh, that was the one we already did, so, yeah, that was it, that's all six of them.
Yep, 603. Are there any questions for Tara then, over those six? Second read.
The only thing I would add is there are a couple of policies that we actually had the name in there, and I think Tara was telling me earlier that there are a couple of them that it, we typically put the position so that we don't have to keep coming back with the name, but I think she told me that those are two that actually have to name a name, right?
Right, they have to say the specific...
That's why it says an actual name of Kingsley-Botchway, because I think you have to identify who, not just the position.
Correct.
Thank you.
All right, so are there any questions? All right, then, seeing none, all those in favor of the last six board policy changes, please signify by saying aye. And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. Thank you, Tara. That takes us then to item L, which is on page 79, and this is the SBRC Modified Allowable Growth Request for School Enrollment. And that recommended motion is that the Board of Education authorize the administration to submit the SBRC application form to the School Budget Review Committee requesting 2018-19 Modified Allowable Growth Funding totaling $811,110.24 to be funded by the 2019-2020 Cash Reserve Levy.
So moved.
Thanks, Sue. And a second?
A second.
Thank you, Rhonda. You all are getting your exercise in on firsts and seconds. And with that, I will turn it over, end discussion, I'll turn it over to Michael Coughlin.
This time of year, every year after the official enrollment count is certified and finished, we have three different components that the state allows us to apply for additional allowable growth. It does not bring any new money into the district, it does not raise taxes, it does not change our budget. It is purely the School Budget Review Committee allowing you to increase the authority that is then can be spent and can be financed by cash reserve levy in the budget that will be decided for 1920. So again, as I have said on other SBRC issues, you can approve the allowance, the application of raising the allowable growth, but it doesn't force you to finance it. That will be a decision that you will make next March and April, when you look at the certified budget and the applicable tax rate that comes after the legislature defines the allowable growth or SSA, and what our property value is. So the three components that are part of this motion, and they're kind of put together because they kind of function the same way, and actually, the first two work together. So the first issue is, as you know, our budget is always defined by enrollment from the year before. So the budget for 1819 was actually the enrollment from October 17. It's a year behind. So when we take the count in 18, if we've actually got more students here than what the 17 count was, we didn't receive any funding for those. So through this, we can apply for the authority for that. So just straight enrollment, it did not go up this year. So there is nothing to apply for under that category. However, the second category is open enrollment. So if we have additional kids, students this year, that we have to pay open enrollment for, and they weren't on last year's count, we can add that authority under, under this action, so we can receive the authority in dollars to be able to transfer that money to the district in which they are attending. So for the October 8, 2018 count, there were 67.9 students above what it was in 17 that we didn't count. So this would be one of the amounts that we are applying for the authority, 67.9 times the cost per pupil of last year, $6,664, and is $452,485.60. And that is authority that we will take that money and send it to other districts because of additional open enroll students. The third category is the limited English proficient, or ELL, students that weren't on last year's count, but they are on this year's count. So we will educate them, we will have costs for them. So when we look at last year's enrollment and this year's enrollment, there was 53, actually 242 additional students, and you take that times their weighting of .22, it's actually 53.24 additional full-time students, times this year's cost per pupil of 67.36, comes up with 358,624.64. And again, under these three categories, and really two apply this year, that the board action is to apply to the SBRC that we would raise our authority by a total of $811,110.24 to actually be able to fund the need of additional open enrollment students and additional ELL students. And then in the spring, the board will make a decision of whether to fund that through cash reserve in March and April.
And Michael, I just want to clarify that it's the authority. It is, it is not asking for, we are not receiving any additional funding for these programs. This is just asking the authority for the school budget to have that.
It is. This year's budget for 1819 is already set.
Right.
We cannot raise that under any circumstance.
So we will be not receiving any, this is not involving any state aid, there's no, there's no change to that. This is just our authority.
The property tax rate is set, state aid is set. This just adds to the authority that if the board chooses to backfill that with cash reserve next spring for 1920 budget, that will be your decision to make at that time.
And that's a local amount, that's our local property tax.
It is all property tax.
Again, not as, this is not, has nothing to do with state funding.
Correct.
Thank you for that clarification.
And in your opinion, why would you not want to do this?
As far as adding the authority, there isn't a reason not to do that. Because the authority just gives you a capability. It doesn't force you to raise the dollars to fund it. That's, that's always a local decision at the time of the budget. So in my opinion, there is no reason not to do this. It's not forcing you to do anything.
And I would also add, too, that I think it sometimes is a natural assumption that if you seek the authority, that you're going to backfill it. However, this board has been very clear about monitoring the amount of the tax rate, which has gone down, I believe, eight out of nine years. And so that is something that this board, so I just want to make the distinction between the two. I think often, people put the two together, that this is additional, and I know that there was, there was some coverage in, in the media on what that looked like, and it's, it said seeking state funding, and it really, that isn't what this is. This is seeking the authority to be able to do that.
And by law, in Iowa, we cannot spend more than our authority. So this is, we must by law ask for the authority to spend on these two items, should we choose to, going forward. So, great. Thank you, Michael. Any other questions for Mr. Coughlin? All right, then, seeing none, all those in favor of approving the SBRC Modified Allowable Growth Request for School Enrollment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. That takes us then to item M, which is on page 81. And this is, I'm going to read this amount, because it's slightly different than I have in my exhibit, the River Hills School Consortium SBRC Application for Special Education Administrative Costs. And that recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve the application to the School Budget Review Committee, SBRC, in the amount of $48,927.88 for special education administrative costs associated with River Hills Consortium Program for the 2019-20 school year. So moved. Thank you, Esther and Sue. One of you can be a second. Great. End discussion. I can turn this over again to, I think Michael Coughlin can explain if there's any questions.
Okay, this again is an SBRC, a request to the SBRC for additional flexibility with how money is spent. It goes through the same governing board, but it's a different twist on this funding. Normally, special ed money can only be spent on kids directly. Teacher, supplies, equipment, so on. Because a special ed student is not a totally a special ed student, they are a 1.0 student first. So part of their funding should pay for regular expenses. So busing and general supplies, things that would, would happen with all students, does not qualify to be spent under special ed. One of those issues is administration. In a lot of situations, the special ed program is within a building that already has a principal. It is not allowable to pay for a special principal for the special ed students, unless it is a separate site. And what you have before you tonight is the two exhibits, item M and then N. We have two different facilities, and I'll explain them together, because it's the same principle, about principles, about administration. So we have River Hills, that is part of the Cedar Falls District, a consortium. And if you look on page 83, you see how many districts are part of that. And there is 107 students currently enrolled there, and we have 32. And what this kind of special facility allows the district to do, all of these districts are applying to the SBRC to say, because this is special, it's an outside facility, it's not part of a facility we have a principal at. So they allow, the SBRC allows all of the districts together to offset the cost of the administration and take it out of special ed funds. Like I said, normally, that's not an allowable cost for special education, but if it is in a separate facility where they obviously need administration for 107 special ed students, and most of these students are Level III with severe disabilities or challenges, the, the need for administration is accepted. So under the Castle Hill, not Castle Hill, that's what it used to be, and we had another program, River Hills, River Hills program through the Cedar Falls District involving all of these other districts. The request that you would be approving is for $48,927.88. It's a little different than the amount that we had originally down, because we needed to add FICA and IPRs, and you see that on page 83. So $48,927.88 is the share for Waterloo to be able to take that out of our special ed funds, and there is sufficient funds to do that without having to use general fund money for this. So this is a special cause that we address every year at this time with the consortiums, whether it's River Hills, or whether it is Bremwood, which is in the Waverly District. And that amount is $6,229.71. So I know you'll do this on separate motions, but it's the same situation, just at two different facilities.
And Michael, I just, again, for clarification, want to say that all the districts that are participating in this consortium will, this is due by, it's January, is that correct?
It's due by December 15, I believe, or is it January?
January.
January.
Cedar Falls wants it, Cedar Falls, their CFO said that he wanted it before the winter break, but he will not send it in until January.
Okay.
So all of the districts that are in this exhibit, but they will all be looking to...
Taking the same action.
Taking the same actions.
Either this month or next month.
Yeah, this month or next month, right. Okay. Are there any further questions then on that? Sue, anything? All right, then, all those in favor of approving the River Hills School Consortium SBRC Application for Special Education Administrative Costs, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. That takes us then to item N, which I know we talked about a little bit, but I'm going to go ahead and put that motion on the table, and that is that the board approved the application to the School Budget Review Committee, or SBRC, in the amount of $6,229.71 for special education administrative costs associated with the Waverly-Shelrock-Leeds Center Consortium Program for the 2019-20 school year. associated with the Waverly-Shellrock Leeds Center Consortium Program for the 2019-20 school year. Thank you, Rhonda. And a second?
Second.
Thanks, you guys. And then discussion, I don't know if anybody has anything further. As Michael said, this is just the second, these are the two different places where we have principals, administration. So.
I just thought it was interesting to compare the cost per student at the River Hills was 13.05, and Bremwood it was 2,076 per student.
Yep.
What would be? Just the administrators paid that much more?
Probably the number.
The number and the need.
The need.
They're two programs that serve different needs, and so. And probably the most thing is the number when you're splitting it between 107 students versus splitting it with 40. So. There's a little difference there. I did notice that as well.
And where do you get 100 and, oh, I see total, 107 versus 40. Gotcha. Because I'm like, we only have, Waterloo has 32 and 3. Okay.
Total numbers. So. All right, anything further on that one then? All right, then seeing none, all those in favor of approving the Leeds Center Consortium SBRC Application for Special Education Administrative Costs, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I heard you guys all good? Yes. I was like, did you say, all right, those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. That concludes our action items for this evening, but we'll move on then to item O on page 87. And this is financial information, and I will once again turn it over to Michael Coughlin, our CFO.
I need to start with apologies. The process that I have gone through to provide the monthly financial reports did not happen as I planned the last couple of days. Still in process of getting a few of the bugs out of the reporting mechanism that I use to get the new year started. I know the new year hasn't just started, but by the time we've got done with the audit and moved into the new budget year, it's just starting for us. So getting caught up with those reports. So what I am, I will distribute some reports as I get them ready to be able to give you something to compare to. And I just want to look at the graphs that are on page 91. It does give you a pretty good picture of how we have started the year and what our balances are. As you look at the graph, starting with the top one, you can see that the double-lined graph is the new year, 1819. And it's showing that we're starting out a little bit ahead of where we were even last year. And you can see that over on the right-hand side with the numbers, that last year through September, our bank balance was just under 16 million, and now it's just a little over 19 million. So that has started out as we've expected. The management fund is almost a carbon copy the last three years in a row. You can see the numbers are almost on top of each other. Management fund is the one that pays for our property and liability coverage. So the expense and revenue pattern for that doesn't change drastically from year to year. The third? Yes?
On the charts, the general fund starts July 18 and goes to June 19. All the other charts are from July 17.
Okay, I'll have to get that changed.
Oh, okay. I didn't know you were comparing. Okay.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay, so these are all for 1819. Yep. The sales tax fund or the penny revenue, the balance is right now around $6 million in that fund. That will drop a little bit as we pay for some bonds in the next couple of months. If you're thinking of numbers that we were talking about at the Facility Committee. And the single-line graph that is kind of over and above, the colored-in graphs, that is the bond for WCC of saying, yep, the blue line. So it started out a little over 16 million, and by the end of last year, it was right around 11 million, and it's down to just over 7 million right now. So that will continue as the WCC is completed. And then the Pebble Fund, this time of year, we're always paying off projects that happened during the summer. It kind of depletes our balances, and the biggest one in this case was the artificial turf at Memorial Stadium. So we will see that, and you will, and you see that in the previous years, that in October and November, taxes come in and that balance jumps back up into a more healthy level. So the graphs are showing that we're starting the year as consistent with the previous couple of years in the way that we've been expecting. I did share some things with the Finance Committee a couple of weeks ago, of projections into the new year for 1819, and I will share that with the rest of you when I get those reports functional. So I am going to send something out to you when I get that done. You'll have it before Thanksgiving break.
Does anybody have any more questions for Michael on that? You sure you don't want to talk about it some more? No.
No, I'm fascinated.
All right, great. All right, well then I will turn it over to Dr. Lindeman for the superintendent's report.
Just a few quick things. First of all, I think it's exciting that tomorrow, there is an amazing event, an amazing event in the Cedar Valley, and it is the Future Ready Iowa Conference Convention. This summit is held in multiple places across the state, and actually the Cedar Valley is really leading the charge on that. I happen to serve on that committee, as do many people, the Planning Committee, and we were itching to go even last spring. And so we were asked by the governor to hold off so that we could participate in the statewide summits, which ours is tomorrow. So it's really a great opportunity for people to go. I wish I could invite people to come, but it is full. They are completely full to capacity, and I understand they have, I believe, 100 people on the waiting list. So it is extremely, it's going to be a great, great event. And so it's an opportunity, because the workforce is changing and because the needs for the workforce are changing, it's just an opportunity to come together with school officials, school instructors, and the business community, and just really talk about what is needed for the Cedar Valley to push us forward. So that is tomorrow all day long, and I will definitely report out to you to tell you a little bit more about it. We are presenting in multiple places, just specifically about the Waterloo Center. We were actually asked to present that because I think it's just a really great example of what schools can do to give kids opportunities. So that is tomorrow. Looking forward to that. And then just two shout-outs. First of all, thanks to all the people who were involved in the STEM Fest. It was Thursday night, and it was just, it was extremely well-attended, and it was truly a great event. There were just hundreds and hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of families and staff members and booths. And I believe out of all the booths, I think we had 19, we were allowed 19 booths. I'm not sure why it wasn't 20, but it was 19, and probably just with our buildings. But it was great, and we were full to capacity. So it was, and maybe just a special shout-out to Angelie Myers. You always get, it's always dangerous to say one person's name because I know there are others who contributed just as much. But she's our STEM coordinator, and I know she really took the lion's share of the work on that. So it was just a great event. And then just in closing, you know, I think that we pay attention to the fact that yesterday was Veterans Day, and I know that today there were several events in our district that were communicated and promoted today while those happened. And just a sincere gratitude toward anyone who is a veteran. We have two military people in front of us, and it has not lost on us the contribution and the sacrifices that our military make to keep us safe. So just a special shout-out to them. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Lindeman. Well, we're a small but mighty board tonight, but I'm going to start down here to my right with Aster. This side has two, this side has two, so we're good.
I don't have anything this evening.
Okay, all right. Rhonda, nothing. Sue, do you have anything?
Well, I just wanted to, if you have an opportunity, check out the district Facebook page. There is just so much information about, I just saw three band students from East High made a big, got to some festival, and I didn't even know this festival existed. So there's just so much on the Facebook page that highlights our students and what's going on and happenings. And again, as Jane said, I would like to thank you both for your military service. And I think often we don't thank you guys enough. So I appreciate your service and what you're doing to keep us able to do this in a public forum. But, and I also.
Not to interrupt, but my understa, Darren, are you also a veteran? He was in the National Guard too.
Right. Or all three of you then. Thank you too, Darren. Yeah.
Not ignoring you back there.
Yeah, no. But, and then in this time of Thanksgiving, I just personally know that this, the district partners with so many people to do dinners and to provide for our community. And on this Saturday, I believe it's the 17th, Lowell is partnering, and they have a big Thanksgiving dinner at Lowell and with a bunch of their partners. And they provide a great packet for families, and it's warm. They let you wait inside of the school. And I believe it's serving, and it is, I mean, a homemade turkey dinner. It is wonderful, and all the fixings. And it starts at 11, and it is that. I know some of the other schools have done it longer, and they get lots of publicity. But Lowell does this, and it's a pretty neat event for our community. So if you are in need of a good meal on Saturday, and if you, they give you a nice packet to take home so you can make a little meal at home too. So just the Lowell staff is there and the partners, and it's just another effort to provide for our community with our district. So I just thank you and invite you all to come to that.
Thank you, Sue. And I know Dr. Lindeman pulled up, we also have one at Cunningham on the.
Is it the 15th?
On the 15th.
Okay, so Cunningham's is the 15th, and I believe Lincoln's is Sunday, the 18th maybe?
Several of them.
So you could eat Thursday, Saturday, and Sunday, right?
Right. Turkey overload. So. No, never, never. So I just have a few things I want to say preemptively, that some of us here are going to be able to attend. The Iowa Association of School Board Convention is this week. And I always really am grateful for that time to collaborate with other school districts. And actually Tara Thomas and I are actually doing a presentation. So if anybody wants to come down to Des Moines and hear what we have to say on Thursday. But I appreciate the opportunity to attend the conference, and like I said, I look forward to it every year. I also want to just remind all of our students who drive. Last Friday, we were lucky enough to have a PD day, but the roads were really slick on Friday morning. And so as we have hit winter weather, or at least the feeling of winter weather pretty early this year, just slow down in the morning when you're getting to school, kiddos. Be careful. And lastly, I would like to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. We will not be having a second meeting in November. Our next meeting will be on December the 10th, and that will be our only meeting in December. So without further ado, unless there's anything else to come before the board, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Thanks, Sue. And a second? And all those in favor? Aye. We are adjourned. Thank you and have a great night.